Great, well, good morning and welcome to the City Planning Commission Remote Public Hearing. Ryan Singer, who is the Department of City Planning Senior Director of Land Use and Commission Operations, is now going to outline general information about this remote public hearing and how you can participate.
Thank you. So verbal testimony may be provided online through the NYC Engage Portal or by calling in on your telephone. If you wish to speak and plan to access the hearing online, please register through the upcoming Meetings page of the NYC Engage Portal. A link to join the hearing is on the landing page after you register. Please do not close the landing page without first clicking on the link. If you're accessing the hearing via phone and wish to speak, you must first register with the dial and participant hotline at the numbers listed on the screen. If one of the numbers is busy, please try another. The meeting ID is 618-237-7396. Press pound to skip the participation ID and the password is the numeral 1. The phone number is also posted on the upcoming Meetings page of the NYC Engage Portal. Please note that whether you're accessing this meeting online or by phone, you must register to speak first. Those accessing the meeting online will have the option to turn on their camera while giving testimony. This is new. We're testing it on a trial basis. So when it is your turn to speak, you'll be notified and promoted to a panelist. This will allow you to unmute your microphone and give you the ability to turn on your camera. It is optional. Please listen closely for your name to be called. When you were being promoted, there will be a short period where it will appear that you are no longer in the meeting. Do not be alarmed. You should rejoin the meeting as a panelist and be able to turn on your camera and unmute your microphone. Please note that promoting the speakers does take a little bit longer, so we're asking people to be patient. If you're accessing the hearing via phone, your name will be called from the list of registered speakers. Once your name has been called, you'll be given the temporary ability to unmute yourself. You do this by pressing star six to unmute your phone. For those listening to the hearing through the online live stream who have not yet registered to speak but decide they wish to do so during the hearing, you must first register to speak through the upcoming Meetings page of the NYC Engage Portal. It's not possible to testify through the online live stream without first having registered. For those accessing the hearing via phone who have not yet registered to speak but wish to do so, you also must first register to speak through the dial and participant hotline that I described a moment ago. It's not possible to testify via telephone without having first registered. Speakers are limited to three minutes of testimony. There are a few exceptions to this time limit. Elected officials are accorded the courtesy of jumping to the front of the queue and are not limited to three minutes. If consecutive translation services are being used, the time will be extended to five minutes. And if an applicant team with three or more speakers wishes to make a team presentation, the team will generally be allowed a total of 10 minutes. The chair will announce when the time limit is reached. Please be mindful of potential background noise during your testimony. Please make sure that if you're watching the proceedings via live stream that the live stream is muted when you begin your testimony. Otherwise, you will hear an echo. If you wish to submit written testimony, it should be submitted to the Department of City Planning. The mailing and email address can be found on our website, planning.nyc.gov. And lastly, please note that the remote public hearing and all testimony provided is being recorded.
And with that, I believe that we are ready for the secretary to begin the meeting.
Good morning. This is a City Planning Commission public meeting held remotely through the NYC Engage Portal. Today is Wednesday, February 17, 2021. I will now call the role: Chair Lago.
Here.
Vice Chair Knuckles.
Here.
Commissioner Bernie.
Yeah.
Commissioner Capelli.
Here.
Commissioner Cirillo.
Here.
Commissioner Duick.
Here.
Commissioner Edie.
Here.
Commissioner Knight.
Here.
Commissioner Levin.
Here.
Commissioner Marine.
Here.
Commissioner Ortiz.
Here.
Commissioner Rampershad.
Here.
A quorum is present. The first item is the approval of the minutes of the public meeting of Wednesday, February 3, 2021.
On the minutes, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The minutes are approved.
Scheduling: Calendar numbers 1 through 7. We have resolutions for adoption scheduling Wednesday, March 3, 2021, for a remote public hearing to be held through the NYC Engage Portal.
On the resolutions, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The resolutions are adopted.
The next part of the calendar is the report section on page 12. Borough of Manhattan, calendar number 8, 6163 Crosby Street, CD2, And the matter of an application for the grant of a special permit concerning 6163 Crosby Street. For favorable report on calendar number 8, Chair Lago.
Yes.
Vice Chair Knuckles.
Yes.
Commissioner Bernie.
Yes.
Commissioner Capelli.
Yes.
Commissioner Cirillo.
Yes.
Commissioner Duick.
Yes.
Commissioner Edie.
Yes.
Commissioner Knight.
Yes.
Commissioner Levin.
Yes.
Commissioner Marine.
Yes.
Commissioner Ortiz.
Yes.
Commissioner Rampershad.
Yes.
Favorable report has been adopted on calendar number 8. Borough of Manhattan, calendar number 9, 5 Mercer Street, CD2, And the matter of an application for the grant of a special permit concerning 5 Mercer Street. For favorable report on calendar number 9, Chair Lago.
Yes.
Vice Chair Knuckles.
Yes.
Commissioner Bernie.
Yes.
Commissioner Capelli.
Yes.
Commissioner Cirillo.
Yes.
Commissioner Duick.
Yes.
Commissioner Edie.
Yes.
Commissioner Knight.
Yes.
Commissioner Levin.
Yes.
Commissioner Marine.
Yes.
Commissioner Ortiz.
Yes.
Commissioner Rampershad.
Yes.
Favorable report has been adopted on calendar number 9. Borough of Manhattan, calendar number 10, Flatiron Bid Expansion, CDs 4 and 5, And the matter of an application concerning the Flatiron Bid Expansion. For favorable report on calendar number 10, Chair Lago.
Yes.
Vice Chair Knuckles.
Yes.
Commissioner Bernie.
Yes.
Commissioner Capelli.
Yes.
Commissioner Cirillo.
Yes.
Commissioner Duick.
Yes.
Commissioner Edie.
Yes.
Commissioner Knight.
Yes.
Commissioner Ortiz.
Yes.
Commissioner Levin is yes too.
Commissioner Levin, apologies. Commissioner Rampershad.
Yes.
Oh, sorry. Commissioner Marine.
Yes.
Commissioner Ortiz.
Yes.
Commissioner Rampershad.
Yes.
Favorable report has been adopted on calendar number 10. Borough of Manhattan, calendar number 11, 110 East 16th Street, CD5, N210136ZAM. And the matter of an application concerning the grant of an authorization for 110 East 16th Street. For adoption on calendar number 11, Chair Lago.
Yes.
Vice Chair Knuckles.
Yes.
Commissioner Bernie.
Yes.
Commissioner Capelli.
Yes.
Commissioner Cirillo.
Yes.
Commissioner Duick.
Yes.
Commissioner Edie.
Yes.
Commissioner Knight.
Yes.
Commissioner Levin.
Yes.
Commissioner Marine.
Yes.
Commissioner Ortiz.
Yes.
Commissioner Rampershad.
Yes.
Calendar number 11 has been adopted. Borough of Queens, calendars numbers 12, 13, and 14. Auburn East, CD14. Number 12, Number 13, C210070ZMQ. Calendar number 14, N210071ZRQ. And the matter of applications for a UTAP designation project approval in zoning map and zoning text amendments concerning Auburn East. For favorable reports on calendar numbers 12, 13, and 14, Chair Lago.
Yes.
Vice Chair Knuckles.
Yes.
Commissioner Bernie.
You know, I will vote in favor of this proposal, but I have to say, you know, much as I think we all welcome the investment in the Rockaways and certainly the nature preserves a wonderful addition. But, you know, the elephant in the room obviously is sea level rise. And as the applicant conceded during the public hearing, this will get us through two mortgage cycles, after which, because of sea level rise, you know, Auburn East will become an island inaccessible because of the water. And people will say, well, you know, what they thinking? You know, they knew this was coming. And although I can certainly see the need for this investment, it really behooves us to think about the long-term consequences and do some long-term planning now because those two mortgage cycles will be upon us quickly than we think. But having said that, I vote yes.
Commissioner Capelli.
Yes.
Commissioner Cirillo.
Yes.
Commissioner Duick.
Yes.
Commissioner Edie.
Yes.
Commissioner Knight.
Yes.
Commissioner Levin.
Yes.
Commissioner Marine.
Yes.
Commissioner Ortiz.
Yes.
Commissioner Rampershad.
Yes.
Favorable reports have been adopted on calendar numbers 12, 13, and 14. Borough of Queens, calendar numbers 15 and 16, 913263rd Drive Rezoning, CD6. Calendar number 15, C20018ZMQ. Calendar number 16, N200179ZRQ. And the matter of applications for zoning map and zoning text amendments concerning 913263rd Drive Rezoning. For favorable reports on calendars numbers 15 and 16, Chair Lago.
Yes.
Vice Chair Knuckles.
Yes.
Commissioner Bernie.
Yes.
Commissioner Capelli.
Yes.
Commissioner Cirillo.
Yes.
Commissioner Duick.
Yes.
Commissioner Edie.
Yes.
Commissioner Knight.
Yes.
Commissioner Levin.
Yes.
Commissioner Marine.
Yes.
Commissioner Ortiz.
Yes.
Commissioner Rampershad.
Recused.
Yes, recused. Favorable reports have been adopted on calendar numbers 15 and 16. Borough of Queens, calendar number 17, 24501 Jamaica Avenue Rezoning. CD13, C200252ZMQ. And the matter of an application for a zoning map amendment concerning 24501 Jamaica Avenue Rezoning. For favorable report on calendar number 17, Chair Lago.
Yes.
Vice Chair Knuckles.
Yes.
Commissioner Bernie.
Yes.
Commissioner Capelli.
Yes.
Commissioner Cirillo.
Yes.
Commissioner Duick.
Yes.
Commissioner Edie.
Yes.
Commissioner Knight.
Yes.
Commissioner Levin.
Yes.
Commissioner Marine.
Yes.
Commissioner Ortiz.
Yes.
Commissioner Rampershad.
Yes.
Favorable report has been adopted on, for calendar number 17. Borough of Queens, calendar number 18, 44th Avenue Demapping, CD4, And the matter of an application for a city map amendment concerning the 44th Avenue Demapping. For favorable report on calendar number 18, Chair Lago.
I'll note that Commissioner Edie is recused on this one, and I vote yes.
Vice Chair Knuckles.
Yes.
Commissioner Bernie.
Yes.
Commissioner Capelli.
Yes.
Commissioner Cirillo.
Yes.
Commissioner Duick. Commissioner Knight.
Yes.
Commissioner Levin.
Yes.
Commissioner Marine.
Yes.
Commissioner Ortiz.
Yes.
Commissioner Rampershad.
Yes.
Favorable report has been adopted for calendar number 18. Borough Staten Island, calendar number 19, 71 Harborview Place, CD1, And the matter of an application for the grant of an authorization concerning 71 Harborview Place. For adoption on calendar number 19, Chair Lago.
Yes.
Vice Chair Knuckles.
Yes.
Commissioner Bernie.
Yes.
Commissioner Capelli.
Yes.
Commissioner Cirillo.
Yes.
Commissioner Duick.
Yes.
Commissioner Edie.
Yes.
Commissioner Knight.
Yes.
Commissioner Levin.
Yes.
Commissioner Marine.
Yes.
Commissioner Ortiz.
Yes.
Commissioner Rampershad.
Yes.
Calendar number 19 has been adopted. Borough Staten Island, calendar number 20 has been laid over. Borough of Staten Island, calendar number 21, 158 Weiner Street, CD3, And the matter of an application for the grant of a certification concerning 158 Weiner Street. For adoption on calendar number 21, Chair Lago.
Yes.
Vice Chair Knuckles.
Yes.
Bernie.
Yes.
Commissioner Capelli.
Yes.
Commissioner Cirillo.
Yes.
Commissioner Duick.
Yes.
Commissioner Edie.
Yes.
Commissioner Knight.
Yes.
Commissioner Levin.
Yes.
Commissioner Marine.
Yes.
Commissioner Ortiz.
Yes.
Commissioner Rampershad.
Yes.
Calendar number 21 has been adopted. The next part of the calendar is a remote public hearing section on page 24.
Morning Commissioners, good morning all. First item, Borough of the Bronx, calendars numbers 22 and 23. CD1, calendar number 22, C200274ZMX. Calendar number 23, N200275ZRX. A public hearing in the matter of applications for zoning map and zoning text amendments concerning 431 Concord Avenue. Note, Commissioner Rampershad is recused from this item.
And our first speaker will be Frank St. Jacques.
Hi, good morning. Frank St. Jacques, Acreman LLP. I am an associate with Acreman LLP. I'll briefly present this project and a representative of Concord Realty LLC will be available for questions if needed after the presentation. Next slide, please. We are here to present an application for a zoning map amendment to change an existing M12 zoning district to an R7D zoning district and a zoning text amendment to establish the mandatory inclusionary housing program within the rezoning area. The purpose of these zoning map and text amendments is to facilitate the redevelopment of an underutilized site with an 11-story residential building with 88 units that will be developed with HPD's Extremely Low and Low Income Affordability, or Ella, program subject to HPD approval. Next slide, please. The rezoning area is located at the edge of an M12 zoning district that was mapped in 1964. The rezoning area is within the transit zone. Is outside of the Port Morris Industrial Business Zone, or IBZ, that ends at East 144th Street. The adjacent zoning district is an R71 medium density non-contextual residential district. The rear 10-foot portion of the site is located in the R71 district, which runs, with the district boundary of which runs down the center of the block. Next slide, please. The rezoning area is shaded in red on this slide. It is located at the corner of Concord Avenue and East 145th Street. St. Mary's Park is on the left side of the slide. The 6th train is a few blocks away at the East 143rd Street Station at Southern Boulevard. There are also several bus lines, the BX17, BX19, and BX33 lines that serve the area. Next slide. Land use in the surrounding area is shown on this map. In, you can see industrial use is concentrated south of the rezoning area in M12 and M13 districts and in the IBZ. North of East 144th Street near the rezoning area, there is some non-conforming residential use in the M12 district, as well as a few non-conforming industrial uses in the R71 residential district. Next slide, please. Here you can see the rezoning area and development site on this tax map. Next slide, please. The proposed rezoning would change the red shaded portion of the zoning map from M12 to R7D, which would allow for the production of new housing in Bronx Community District 1, which is not currently permitted in the M12 zoning district. The proposed zoning change is appropriate because it's located at the edge of an M12 zoning district adjacent to an R71, which has comparable bulk provisions to the proposed R7D. It's also in close proximity to public transportation and St. Mary's Park. I see that run out of time. I apologize.
Thank you. At this point, we can turn it over to Commissioners for questions. Commissioner Levin.
Since you're here, first off, it's wonderful to be able to see you, but I wonder if the DCP technical folks, we're mostly seeing the clock. If you could make it so that the speaker takes precedence over the clock, that would be helpful to us. I wonder if you could tell us about the affordable housing program planned for the new building and in particular, the changes that came about as a result of your discussions with the Borough President.
Yes, I'd be happy to. So the applicant is seeking to develop the site with the HPD's Ella term sheet. So subject to HPD approval, half of the 88 units would be affordable at less than 50% AMI. So we're still working with HPD on the specifics. But HPD's Ella term sheet requires 80% of the units at 80% AMI or below with a 15% set aside for formerly homeless households. I'll also note that because we would be mapping an MIH area with this proposed project, the number of permanently affordable units would be increased. There's an additional requirement for permanently affordable units when you're seeking to develop a 100% affordable project. So that's a requirement of the term sheet here. The units, we had initially filed with about 92 units in, with the initial filing. After conversation with the Borough President's Office, they had asked us to increase the number of two-bedroom and three-bedroom units. That resulted in a reduction of the total number of units down to 88. But I can tell you the unit distribution, which we've arrived at now. We submitted a letter to the Commission that outlines this as well. But the unit distribution we're working with now is for, again, 88 total units. 12 studios, which is 14%, 38 one-bedrooms, which is 43%, and then 28 two-bedrooms, which is 32%, and 10 three-bedrooms, which is 11%.
Okay. Those all seem like very positive changes. And you're also pursuing option 1 at this point.
That's correct, yes.
Okay. Thanks for that information.
Thank you.
Other questions? Thank you, Mr. St. Jacques.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Nathan Cohen.
Good morning. Can you hear me?
Yes.
How are you? I am part of the development team. I love to answer any questions you guys may have for myself. And I wanted to thank you, you know, all for joining us this morning.
Questions from the Commission for Mr. Cohen.
And I just wanted to give you a little background on us. You know, we, my father, this is a family-owned business. We are a, you know, minority-owned business. And we've, you know, been doing our real estate in the Bronx over the last 30 years. And, you know, affordable housing and, you know, creating great housing for this community has always been, you know, of the utmost importance for us. So we look forward to hearing your thoughts, your concerns, and, you know, we, you know, are very interested in giving back to the community and doing, you know, whatever we can to, you know, create housing in this great borough.
Thank you. I see that Commissioner Marine has a question.
Correct. Thank you, Chair. Mr. Cohen, pleased to make your acquaintance, though be it virtually. I had, you answered one of my questions, which was, what was the development experience of the team? So you've answered partially, and I appreciate that. The other request that I had was to present visuals of what the street experience would be like and the facade to the rear of the building, just because that's facing the park. And the concern for me was that, as you know, this is a manufacturing district where, you know, the sidewalk, the street hadn't really been kept well. And so my concern was, what was the street experience for the tenants once they start coming down 144th and around the corner from Jackson Avenue? Because as you know, that's the bus direction, and then, of course, coming down 144th towards Southern Boulevard would be the 6th train. So my concern was the pedestrian experience at the building, and I don't know that you have any drawings for that.
So I think Frank, he can share your screen. I don't know if he can still share his screen, but he had his presentation that we can, you know, send to everybody of, you know, what the building is going to look like. You know, a street view, you know, what color and, you know, how high and everything. So we can have an aerial view of the building sent to you guys. That's not an issue of what is going to be. And then in terms of, you know, maintenance and whatever, you know, we, you know, have, again, been in the Bronx for a long time now. And, you know, we are committed to, you know, doing whatever is best for the community and, you know, doing whatever is best for our neighbors and everybody around us.
And I just also wanted to comment, I also appreciate the fact that the larger family sizes were accommodated because, as you know, there's a lot of families that are looking for units. So thank you.
Other questions? Thank you, Mr. Cohen. And I would ask if, Ryan, if others have signed up to speak on this matter?
No further speakers on the side.
Okay, then the public hearing is closed.
Brooklyn, calendar numbers 24 and 25. CD1, calendar number 24, C210138ZMK. Calendar number 25, N210139ZRK. A public hearing in a matter of applications for zoning map and zoning text amendments concerning Acme Smoke Fish Gem Street Rezoning. Please note that a remote public hearing is being held by the City Planning Commission in conjunction with the above you heard hearing to receive comments related to a draft environmental impact statement, DEIS. This hearing is being held pursuant to the State Environmental Quality Review Act and the City Environmental Quality Review.
There will be a 10-minute team presentation by a team comprised of Raymond Levin, Adam Caslow, and Stu Little.
Ray, are you on this morning?
Yes, I am. I'm trying to exit the full screen. There we go. Okay. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Good morning. I'm Raymond Levin. I'm with the firm of Herrick Feinstein Land Use Council to RP Inlet. The applicant for approvals to allow development of a new home for Acme Smoke Fish, which will be subsidized by the development of an adjacent office building. I'm joined this morning by co-venturers in this project, Stu Leonard of Rubenstein Partners and Adam Caslow of Acme Smoke Fish, the company founded by his grandfather in 1906. Next slide, please. The plan as conceived is based on an innovative idea nurtured by Carl Weisbrot, which led to the enactment of the Industrial Business Incentive Area Special Permit, IBIA, first employed at 25 Kent Avenue, just a few blocks from the site. Sorry. Using that idea, that new commercial space could offset the cost of new manufacturing space, the current project implements it in two ways. Unlike the existing IBIA projects, in this project, the industrial space is being built first before one square foot of office or retail space. And rather than creating speculative industrial space, in this case, the industrial user is known and the space tailored to their needs. To accomplish this, we are seeking approvals to change the underlying zoning district and grant a large-scale development special permit. Specifically, next slide, please. A zoning map amendment to change M31 to M15. Next slide, please. And a large-scale general development special permit to allow certain penetrations of the sky exposure plane and initial setback distance. These waivers are needed because accommodating These waivers are needed because accommodating the standalone Acme factory footprint would leave the office floor dimensions less than ideal on the fifth, eighth, and ninth floors. Next slide, please. The waivers would allow the Gem Street wall on the office building to rise to one hundred and four feet rather than the eighty five foot maximum and allow the eighth and ninth floors of the office building to penetrate the sky exposure plane on Gem Street and Meserel Avenue. These actions, the zoning map change and heightened setback waivers, would lessen the impact of the four story freestanding Acme factory building on the office building and allow the floors in the office building to be aligned with market expectations to foster the development's financial viability. To present more insights on the plan and to keep Acme in Brooklyn is Stu Leonard, little, oh, sorry, Stu Little of Rubenstein Partners. Next slide, please.
Thanks, Ray. I appreciate the opportunity to present this proposal. If approved, Acme Smoke Fish, born in Brooklyn one hundred fifteen years ago, will have a new home that serves its future and the cities. To meet the growing demand for its products and comply with current health and safety standards, Acme needs a new next generation factory that will allow the great grandchildren of Harry Brownstein to stay in Brooklyn. But building and operating a factory of this type in New York is cost prohibitive. Further complicating this effort and increasing both its cost and size is the fact that Acme will need to remain in its current facility until its new factory is complete. Moving twice or stopping production are not viable options. And to meet the operational needs and regulatory requirements, Acme needed a standalone facility with the ability to install certain elements of the building systems on its roof. Next slide. To address these conditions, the development site was expanded to the entire block. And agreements are now in place to relocate all existing uses to nearby locations. Acme's new four story building will be constructed on the northwest section of the site, closest to the corner of Meserel Avenue and Banker Street. Next slide, please. Once their relocation is complete, demolition of the current facility will commence, and then construction of the remaining component will begin. Next slide, please. The design of the new commercial space minimizes impact by, one, incorporating materials compatible with the existing character of the neighborhood. Next slide. Two, creating a pleasant pedestrian experience that includes about half an acre of open space and retail shops intended as amenities to both neighborhood residents and building tenants. Next slide, please. Forward one more slide, please. Thank you. Completing the, in three, completing the building with a glass box significantly setback from the brick facade of the base. The reality is that the commercial component of this plan offers a revenue stream that is absolutely needed to subsidize Acme's new home. The cost of the building, the cost of building this new facility is some four million, forty million dollars more than will ever be recovered, making a standalone factory economically unachievable. Next slide, please. By allowing this proposal to move forward, more than one hundred union jobs at Acme, many held by Brooklyn residents will be saved. And a place for more than two thousand jobs will be created. Some five hundred fifty million in private investment will offer an economic boost that is needed now more than ever. And to be sure that the people closest to the development will benefit, we are partnering with Saint Nick's Alliance to provide job training services to neighborhood residents for both the construction of the building and as a service to those companies who lease space in the building and want to tap into the local workforce. Next slide, please. We are also working with the friends of Bushwick Inlet Park and North Brooklyn Parks Alliance to support their efforts, even as we provide more than half an acre of open space that will link McCarran Park to the new waterfront park once it's built. Community Board One recommended approval of this plan by an overwhelming two to one margin, and we are working to make it better by incorporating their specific recommendations, including, one, assurances that Acme space will remain manufacturing; two, several environmentally friendly best practices; three, compliance with all relevant local laws; and four, minimizing the impact of both the construction and operation of new factory and commercial spaces. As recommended, we agreed to the condition offered by the community board that we seek to enter the Industrial Development Agency IDA program, which would require the Acme space to be maintained as industrial for a minimum of twenty five years. To ensure the project's benefits stay close to home, as recommended by CB One, we will finalize an agreement with Saint Nick's Alliance, which would serve as our partner in providing skills training and job placement services for at least construct twenty five construction laborers and will work with them to devise additional job training and placement programs for potential tenants of the commercial spaces. This will ensure that local residents are fully able to enjoy the economic benefits derived from the development. Adam will now offer additional details from his perspective. Next slide, please.
City Planning Commission, thank you for this opportunity. As Ray mentioned, Acme was started in Brooklyn by my great grandfather, Harry Brownstein, in nineteen oh six. Harry was a wagon jobber, meaning he started selling fish from horse drawn wagon, leading to the creation of one of Brooklyn's best known brands, delivering quality products to hundreds of restaurants, bagel stores, appetizing shops, retailers, and other establishments throughout the five boroughs and exporting products throughout the world. We've grown substantially over the past one hundred years and now have a number of facilities up and down the eastern seaboard. In fact, even as we're seeking approval to build the new headquarters and factory in Brooklyn, we are completing construction of a distribution center in New Jersey and continue to settle into a new facility we opened in North Carolina just a few years ago. Staying in Brooklyn poses some significant challenges. Limited capacity and an outdated plant are an ongoing issue. Advances in food safety increase costs and stretch the capabilities of our aging facility. The level of investment required to upgrade our current facility is fairly cost prohibitive. Out of state locations offer more cost effective, cost efficient solutions, but our family wants to keep our business in Brooklyn. Updating the facility to reflect modern processes cannot be done while Acme continues to operate as current food safety regulations would prohibit the construction in our plan. Next slide, please. So key to the success of this is that we will continue to operate in our current plan as this new facility is being constructed. Once the four story freestanding building is done, we'll move in and the rest of the development project can proceed. Next slide, please. In total, we will expand by some forty percent in square foot, square footage, to a total of approximately ninety five thousand square feet. We're using the most advanced systems to ensure the building is safe, neighborhood compatible, and environmentally sustainable. Thank you so much.
Perfect timing. Vice Chair Knuckles.
Thank you. A question for, two questions. The first of which is Mr. Little, during your presentation, I think you mentioned five hundred fifty million dollars in investment. Did I hear that right?
That's correct. That's the number I.
Could you just explain that, put that in context for me again, please?
Yeah, so, you know, there's many different components to purchasing and developing and building out the site. And so between, you know, cost to purchase the land, develop the land, and tenant the land, we anticipate private investment of at least five hundred fifty million dollars for the site.
I believe you have over thirty thousand square feet of retail planned for the site. What do you envision occupying those retail spaces?
Yep, so, you know, ultimately, we want the retail to cater to not only the tenants of the building, but the neighborhood in general, which is what's going to make a retailer successful in those locations. So while we don't have specific uses for each, you know, individual square foot within the thirty thousand total planned out, we imagine it'll be a mix of, you know, food and beverage, lifestyle apparel, but, you know, probably pretty heavy on community like food and beverage.
Thank you.
Other questions? Commissioner Levin.
Yes, Mr. Little, while we have you, are you the right person to ask for an update about the tenoning of twenty five Kent?
Yes, I can speak to that. So twenty five Kent delivered in late twenty nineteen, and we were very happy to sign up, you know, in an industrial manufacturing tenant with KIF, who has now started occupying their space as of February. In addition, we've signed another office lease during the pandemic, and we continue to negotiate, you know, negotiate and speak to tenants with requirements of a total of two hundred thousand square feet of office out of, you know, a remaining three hundred thousand square feet. You know, we had a lot of momentum going into the pandemic, and, you know, I think about eighty percent of the building we were in deep stage negotiations with to have leased. And unfortunately, a lot of those requirements have gotten put on hold within the past year. But, you know, we do see signs of the market changing here shortly and have already seen that in the outset of twenty twenty one. And we're ultimately confident about our ability to lease commercial space at the Acme project, which will be coming online until twenty twenty six, won't be coming online until twenty twenty six, given the fact that we build the Acme factory first.
Right, right. Well, that's a really appealing feature of this. And just to be clear, so this is not an IBIA special permit application, but it's IBIA like in that it combines industrial space with other uses, right?
Correct, yes.
Okay, but so returning to twenty five Kent, how much industrial space will you have left after KIF has moved in?
Thirty thousand square feet.
To, for, that still.
Remaining to lease, correct.
Okay, all right. Well, that must be just hugely frustrating for you to have gotten caught with this pandemic situation. It was gonna be hard enough to, even without that, and I wish you all the best.
Thank you.
Like a very elegant solution to a similar situation.
Thank you.
Commissioner Bernie.
Oh, thank you. Yes, I echo that. I love everything about this project, except the architecture. And it just seems to me that, you know, it really does give the impression with the different massing and different materials of being sort of several different buildings designed and built somewhere else and then brought to the site. And I just wonder whether you might not prevail on your architects to rationalize things a little bit. It may even save you some money just to sort of simplify and rationalize some of the, some of the architecture. But other than that, good luck, a great, great project, and I wish you well.
Other questions from the commission? And I'll thank the applicant team. And Paul as our next speaker, Mark Espinoza.
Hello, can I be heard?
Yes.
Awesome, fantastic. Good morning, Chair Largo and members of the committee. My name is Mark Espinoza, and I'm a member of thirty two BJ for the past thirteen years. I'm here today on behalf of my union to express our support for the proposed project with thirty Gem Street. Thirty two BJ, as you know, is the largest property service union in the country, representing eighty five thousand property service workers in New York City, including more than fifteen hundred who live in the Greenpoint-Williamsburg neighborhood and four hundred eighty six members who work in the community. Thirty two BJ supports responsible developers who invest in the communities where they build. I am happy to report that the Rubenstein Partners and Acme Smoke Fish have made a credible commitment to creating prevailing wage building service jobs at this site. This commitment is an investment in the community by providing prevailing wages and benefits that give working families opportunity for upward mobility and security. We estimate that this development will lead to a creation of eighteen new janitorial jobs and approximately eight security jobs. It's not often that a company like Acme Smoke Fish stays in New York City. So we are so pleased that a company with deep roots in the community is able to expand and develop their facilities while providing opportunities for the community. We are in full support of this project, and we have full confidence that the Rubenstein and Acme Smoked Fish will be a responsible employer and presence in the community. For these reasons, we respectfully urge you to approve this rezoning. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions for Mr. Espinoza? Thank you for testifying.
Thank you.
Speaker is Paul Samolsky.
Hello, can I be heard?
Yes, welcome.
Hi, good morning, and thanks for giving me the opportunity to speak. My name's Paul Samolsky. As you just said, I'm the president of the North Brooklyn Chamber, and we represent Bushwick, Greenpoint, and Williamsburg. And we're a grassroots organization that focuses on all businesses, large and small. And within our community, Acme Smoke Fish has an important component, have become an important component of our community for many decades. And with regard to the rezoning requests, we strongly support this. As a community business organization, we have had very successful relationships with both Acme and Rubenstein Partners. And the thoughtful design of this project, as it was explained to us, as well as the promise of much needed additional local jobs, makes this something we're very excited about. Not to mention the fact that at this time of pandemic craziness that we're all going through, and as a business organization, seeing more and more businesses close their doors every day, we believe it's important and uplifting to see some positive movement. This is definitely that. We also want to note that Acme's Fish Fridays have, over time, become an important weekly event that many families and individuals look forward to and support week after week. And this is just one example of how Acme has become an important component in North Brooklyn. And we respectfully ask the commission to look favorably on their rezoning request. Thank you.
Thank you. And I was very pleased to see that even during the pandemic, Acme was able to pivot and keep a version of Fish Friday. Questions from the.
Yes, part of their thoughtful operation.
Thank you for your testimony.
Thank you.
Speaker will be Richard Mazur.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, please go ahead.
All right, hi. My name is Rich Mazur. And I've been a resident of Greenpoint since nineteen fifty. I'm the executive director of the North Brooklyn Development Corporation, and we've done many developments in the community, both on the industrial commercial side, which included creating the Greenpoint Manufacturing Design Center in the early nineties. Maybe Commissioner Knuckles might remember that we appeared before the commission when we converted the Herbert Street Police Station into affordable condos, which I think Commissioner Knuckles said was one of the most creative reuses of city property that he'd ever seen. Anyway, enough about how great we were. Acme Smoke Fish is a fond smell and memory for me for pretty much all my life. As an immigrant that came to America when I was two years old, many of our family friends actually got great jobs at Acme Smoke Fish. I remember my confirmation godfather always smelled like a smoked salmon. And these weren't, and he was a supervisor there or something, and he always, you know, gave me nice gifts for confirmations and birthdays and things like that. We thought he was one of the rich guys in the neighborhood, and he worked at Acme. Aside from that, I'm a big fan of keeping the industrial business zone in the community that maintains a live work environment and gives Greenpoint that great cachet. We need to keep the legacy of Acme in the community. All of the appetizing stores that existed in New York City are pretty much gone, except for, let's call it Zabar's, Russ and Daughter's, or whatever. And when I visit them, I see the Acme Smoke Fish truck in front delivering the fish. So aside from the fact that Acme continues to provide jobs for the community, and I know they're good jobs, I guess originally it was mostly eastern. I guess originally it was mostly Eastern Europeans and now it's mostly Latinos. Uh, and literally, Acme created a stepping stone for the American dream for a lot of the people that lived in Greenpoint. Now, the commercial venture, you know, I, I often think of our old industrial zones as being kind of ugly and, uh, you know, kind of like a, an industrial wasteland. Now that, it may not seem contextual because it's nine stories, but I think it's only a risk to the investors who need to lease the space.
Mr. Mazur, Mr. Mazur, I'm afraid your time is up, but
Oh, my time is up. Anyway, obviously, it's the best tasting smoked fish on the planet and I, I'd love to have it right around the corner. Thanks.
I have two observations on your testimony. One, as we get closer to lunchtime, your mention of smoked salmon, I think has many of us salivating. And then second,
Thank you.
assure you that this commission, um, does not view industrial areas as ugly. They are an essential part of the city. And with that, I will turn it over to commissioners for questions. Commissioner Oddees.
Hi, thank you for your testimony. You know, as, as someone who's familiar with the area and the workforce, you know, one question I raised yesterday had to do with really how workers get to the area. You mentioned, you know, the connections to Greenpoint. You know, increasingly, we see people biking, you know, not, not just walking, taking e-scooters. You know, what, what do you see in this area and how important is providing, you know, parking for these people, whether it's bike parking or safe places to put, you know, the, their bikes or scooters?
Mr. Mazur?
Oh, I'm sorry. I wasn't, I wasn't listening, actually. Can you repeat that?
Sure. Um, you know, as someone very familiar with the local area, the workforce, you mentioned the connections to Greenpoint and how workers get there. We've increasingly seen the use of bikes and e-scooters for people trying to get to areas that aren't well accessible by transit. You know, one of the issues I raised in the review session just had to do with, you know, the need for bike parking, safe, safe parking. You know, what, what's your sense of, of the need for something like that as someone who's there?
Oh, I, you know, I absolutely agree with you because, you know, I'm, I'm especially fond of riding bikes in the community because obviously it's a much healthier way to get around and I didn't look at the project to see how much bicycle parking they had, but I, I wholeheartedly support putting as much of it in as possible because especially on retail Fridays, there's no place to park your cars. You have to get there somewhere to get the fish. And bikes are the best way to get there.
Thank you. Vice Chair Knuckles.
Well, thank you. Just, I just wanted to salute Rich Glazer. It's glad to, to hear from him. I can't see him, but I'm glad to hear from him and I just want to salute Greenpoint Development Corporation for their work over the years and in maintaining, uh, the industrial presence in, in Brooklyn.
I appreciate that, Chair Knuckles. Uh, you can't see me, but I'm just as pretty as I was 10 years ago.
I'll take your word for that.
That's why you don't see me.
Well, thank you for your testimony, Mr. Mazur. And Brian, I would ask if anyone else has signed up to testify on this item?
Let me just. There are no further speakers on this item.
Okay, um, I will note that the record on this item is going to remain open through Monday, March 1st of this year to receive written comments on the draft environmental impact statement. And with that, the public hearing is closed.
For Brooklyn, calendar number 26, CD1, C210043ZMK. A public hearing in the matter of an application for zoning map amendment concerning 135 to 137 Bedford Avenue.
Our first speaker will be Richard Lobell.
Good morning, Chair and Commissioners. Richard Lobell of Sheldon Lobell, PC for the applicant. It is a pleasure to see and be seen by the commission. I don't know who's more excited, me or my dry cleaner. To discuss the 135 to 137 Bedford Avenue rezoning, we've got a commercial overlay rezoning here. Uh, next slide, please. You can see from the zoning map that this is a block which is predominantly manufacturing residential mixed-use M12R6A. This zoning was set, uh, in roughly 2005 with the frontage on Bedford Avenue for 100 feet deep, split between R6A and R6B districts. So what this rezoning would accomplish would be to bring a C14 overlay to allow for ground floor commercial use along this frontage. We note that across the street, the 116 Bedford Avenue rezoning approved by the commission in 2018 similarly allowed a C14 to allow for ground floor commercial use. Next slide. As can be seen from the zoning map, both this one and the previous one, there are existing commercial overlays on Bedford Avenue on the east side of the street from North 5th to North 8th and on the west side, I think from North 4th to North 11th. So as is, was recognized by the commission in previous rezonings, there is a commercial flavor to Bedford Avenue, which would be supported by this rezoning. Next slide. So you can see here the boundaries of the development site itself, roughly 3,300 square feet and the 10 lots that would be encompassed within the rezoning with a 100-foot-deep commercial overlay extending east from Bedford Avenue. Next slide. So this is the land use map. Interestingly, to note, um, the majority of the uses on the entirety of the block are commercial. Uh, over 80% of the block consists of commercial uses, uh, as would be indicated by the M12R6A district. And roughly 50% of the project area, the 10 lots or portions of 11 lots included in the rezoning have commercial, commercial use. So this really, uh, basically allows for existing uses to be legal conforming commercial uses and allows for proposed commercial development on the ground floor of the premises. Next slide. So if you want to page through the photos, the photos essentially demonstrate the existing ground floor conditions on the sites here. And if you want to go to the zoning change map, the zoning change map indicates merely the establishment of a commercial overlay on this, on the site. And I'm happy to answer any questions from the commission.
Thank you. Questions from the commission? Commissioner Levin.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Lobell, both the community board and the borough president were, I think, understandably concerned about the potential for a good time in the backyard and recommended that the solution to that was to build out the ground floor completely. Do you know anything about your client's plans for their new development? And whether the wishes of the community board and the borough president might be fulfilled?
Yeah, I think that there's a unity and interest here. There's a very limited floor plate. The, the lots are only roughly 80 feet deep. So we've got about roughly 3,300 square feet on the ground floor. All of it would be occupied by commercial and the intention would be to build a fully enclosed building within the rear yard to allow for, uh, not only enclosed use within that space, but also to minimize any noise or disruption to the neighborhood. So we're all in agreement on this. Moreover, there's a residential component to this. Obviously, there's seven residential units in the roughly 5,500 square feet above the commercial use. And so it's in the owner's interest to minimize any disruption to its tenants. So we're really all on the same page.
Okay, that's good to know. Thank you.
Sure.
Other questions? Well, thank you and good to see you again, Mr. Lobell.
Thank you, Chair. You as well.
Our next speaker will be Fayanne Betan.
Good morning, commissioners. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, um, I was just here, uh, from Sheldon Lobell, PC. I was here as backup to Richard and I'm here to answer any questions. I think I do want to say that I believe there was one question from the review session yesterday regarding the height of the building. I just wanted to note that, remind the commission that this is a split lot and one portion of the buildings in an R6A and the other is an R6B. So one side of the lot permits a, a larger height, a greater height.
Thank you. Questions? Thank you for your testimony. And Ryan, not yet checking to see if anyone else has signed up to speak on this matter?
Uh, no, there are no further speakers on this item.
Okay, then this public hearing is closed.
For Brooklyn, calendar number 27, CD5, C210109BJK. A public hearing in the matter of an application for UDAP designation, private approval and disposition of city-owned property concerning HPD, New Penn, UDAP.
There will be a 10-minute team presentation by a team comprised of Alana Smith, Sushma Pramad, Amina Boyad, Lynn Zhang, and Alice Friedman.
Um, good morning. I think Sushma will kick us, um, kick off this presentation. So she's on.
Hi, yes, I'm, sorry, I just was rejoining. Uh, all right. Um, good morning, commissioners. Thank you for this opportunity to present the New Penn Development Affordable Housing Project. My name is Sushma and I am the lead planner from HPD on this project and I'm joined this morning by Lynn Zhang and Alice Friedman from HPD, along with the development team. Uh, next slide, please. We're very excited to be here today to discuss the New Penn Development YULAP application, which will facilitate the development of three new construction buildings in East New York with approximately 46 affordable rental units and additional super's unit. All the units will be affordable to very low-income and low-income families and individuals. The project was awarded to Rajon Management in partnership with BM Architecture through the Nihop NCB RFQ in 2018, whose primary objective was to improve small scattered on-due-year-life sites with 100% quality affordable housing. The YULAP application was certified on November 2nd, 2020. Next slide, please. As you can see on the map, uh, the proposed development is a scattered site development located on three vacant city-owned lots in East New York. They are all located within Community District 5 and Council District 42 and are within half a mile of each other. The neighborhood is mainly residential with access to transit. The 234 trains run along the Bonner Avenue to the south, A and C along Picken Avenue to the north, and the L train is available at Van Seklen Avenue to the west. There are also several bus lines in the neighborhood like the B20, B83, and B14. And I am now going to hand it over to Amina, who will speak to the design of the proposed development. And Alana will later on talk about the proposed affordability.
Thank you, Sushma. Good morning. I'm Amina Boyad and I'm with the development team and I'll be presenting our three building. Next slide, please. So this is development site one, 306 Pennsylvania, located on Pennsylvania Avenue, an important artery in East New York. The building is within a primary residential district and the land is approximately 5,000 square feet with 50 feet frontage along Pennsylvania Avenue. Next slide, please. 306 Pennsylvania will be developed as a seven-story elevator building with approximately 25 affordable units, including eight affordable independent residences for seniors and one additional two-bedroom for the super. Next slide, please. To the left is our site plan, showing the rear yard usable as tenant recreation area with planters and benches. We're also providing a rain garden as a sustainable measure to reduce water runoff from the property and recharge groundwater. And we're optimistic of providing solar panel in the roof. To the right is the typical floor plan from second to seventh floor, showing four apartments per floor, two-one-bedroom, one-studio, and one-two-bedroom. Next slide, please. This is site two, 392 Wayona, with 40 feet frontage along Wayona Street. The land is approximately 4,000 square feet and located within an R6 zoning district. Next slide, please. 392 Wayona will be developed as a four-story walk-up building with approximately 11 affordable units. Next slide, please. Similar to 306 Pennsylvania, the rear yard is usable as tenant recreation space with a rain garden. For this building, we decided to raise the ground floor by two foot three to provide more privacy to the first-floor units and we're providing an access plan. To the right is the typical floor plan from second to fourth floor and is indicating three apartments per floor, one-studio, one-one-bedroom, and one-three-bedroom. Next slide, please. Last but not least is development site three, 426 Wayona, 467 Vermont on Blake Avenue. The land is 20 by 200, which is approximately 4,000 square feet. Next slide, please. For this building, we incorporated comments from the community board and designed 426 Wayona, 467 Vermont as a single building with two wings, A and B, connected in the cellar. The building will have 10 affordable units and an open entrance along Blake Avenue. The rendering shown here is along Wayona Streets. Wing A is set back to match the street walls of adjacent buildings. The ground floor is raised by 30 inches to provide more privacy to the first-floor units. Next slide, please. Here, the rendering is showing the building along Vermont Street, which is wing B, that is four-story high and also set back from the streets. We provided conustration to minimize blank walls and break down the facades and maximize natural light for the vertical circulation core. Next slide, please. The site plan is showing the two wings, A and B, and the open entrance along Blake Avenue, which is allowing us to keep a green corridor and not altering the block's fabric. Next slide, please. For this building, we had a design opportunity to have a full-floor unit as a three-bedroom and upper floors provide studios and one-bedroom units, focusing on East New York's need for affordable housing. So we gave you an overview of our three development sites and there are a few characteristics that are common to all three buildings. All units and unit sizes are designed to HPD and DOB standards and guidelines. All buildings will have indoor bicycle storage for tenants. And regarding sustainable measures, white roofs will be provided to reduce heat island effect. We'll follow passive house standards for construction using triple-glazed windows and additional insulation. And finally, we'll comply with the Enterprise Green Community Guidelines 2020. Thank you. And now Alana will continue with our presentation.
Thank you, Amina. Hello, everyone. My name is Alana Smith and I'm a development consultant working with the team on this project. I'd like to draw your attention to the chart on this slide. It shows the number of different unit types and the percentage of each as part of the total number of units. It reveals the income and rent ranges respectively. We are social equity advocates first and foremost and want to reassure all that our rental plan puts forward a people-first approach. Therefore, achieving the right unit and income mix is important to get right. The affordability matrix we used in helping us determine the desired income bands came from the East New York zoning commitment report, whereby residents of the community provided clear input about what they envisioned to be most, most desirable and ensuring that any projects in their neighborhood were as deeply affordable as possible. Taking together this input, along with HUD limits published in summer 2020, we know that the median household's income in East New York was about $37,000 in 2019. Half of the neighborhood's residents are rent burdened. Therefore, this project will serve the 0% to 80% AMI income bands, which is within the confines of what a majority of East New York residents earn per year. Other than the economic reality of cross-unit subsidization, having a range of unit types means households upon approved application can upsize or downsize throughout their tenancy in the project as their needs and income changes. By providing a variety of apartment sizes that cater to a wider swath of household size and type, we can also create housing for seniors, formerly homeless individuals, and larger families. To note, we are well aware that the consequence To note, we are well aware that the consequences of the pandemic are far-reaching. To determine a project's financial feasibility, we rely upon the information available to us at the time in which we number crunch. Income levels of today may be different from income levels in twenty twenty-two when we aim to close on the project financing. We will adjust accordingly as a result. Next slide please. In summary, under the auspices of HPD's Neighborhood Construction Program, the entirety of the project will yield ten new energy-efficient residential buildings containing seventy-one rentals and two super units. Upon completion of the UDAP properties alone, we will create forty-six affordable rental units, including eight heirs' units for seniors. Our targeted household income ranges are reflective of the community's needs with apartments affordable to a wide income band. We will market apartments through Housing Connect and do what we can to ensure that households in the neighborhood have time to prepare for the impending application process. For all phases of the project, the development can, excuse me, the development team consisting of two MBE firms are committed to hiring locally and will conduct outreach to the community board, New York City Small Business Services, Hire NYC, and Man Up. Next slide please. This slide shows a breakdown of our timeline as we continue to seek approvals, the key targets for loan closing and construction of the project, and finally lease-up and stabilization. We aim to close on the project financing in twenty twenty-two and lease-up in twenty twenty-four. Last slide please. In conclusion, the new development team wishes to thank all of you in advance for your constructive input on this project. We welcome your questions and comments and open the floor to you now. Thank you.
Thank you, and I have to say it is such a pleasure to see our HPD colleagues after such a long period of time. Questions for the applicant team? Then I will, oh yes, Commissioner Bernie.
Thank you. No, good job, everybody. I just have one comment really on the buildings. And it seems to me, you know, the Winona Street buildings, both of them are, you know, perfectly good brick, straightforward buildings, but the one on Pennsylvania Avenue, I'm not quite sure what's going on. It's not clear what the materials are. It's kind of a strange facade. It doesn't look really contextual to the neighborhood. So I wonder if the architects might be encouraged to take a fresh look at the Pennsylvania Avenue.
Um, yeah, thank you, Commissioner Bernie. And I, you know, we heard that feedback at the, at the certification presentation, you know, a couple of months ago. So we definitely brought that up with the developer. They've since been looking at other design options. So I think at some point, you know, we could, we could loop back with the staff at DCP and to see if there's a facade that's more contextual at that location.
Terrific. Thank you, Lynn.
Sure.
Commissioner Levin.
Um, yes, thank you. These are three nice, Commissioner Bernie's comments notwithstanding, these are three nice, small projects, and I realize what a challenge it is to, to, to do these small infill projects. It's great that the development team is willing to take them on. I'm curious to know about the development team's experience working in the neighborhood and how they will go about managing these scattered buildings, whether they're managing other similar buildings in the area. What, what is the strategy for building management going forward?
I believe Prag or Raj from the development team are also on, so I think that question is probably best answered by them.
Yeah, hi. Rajoy, who's the local, uh, he, Rajoy has been in the community board since, uh, two thousand, uh, three, I had done a few jobs with him. We did some NRP's, NRP's and some smaller houses. They are managing more than sixty, seventy units right now. They put ten buildings in past for sale. They're also working with other seven-year sections of the building, uh, under different HUD programs, and they are in the neighborhood for very long.
Okay, and, and already set up for managing a variety of spaces?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Not seeing any other raised hands, I will thank the development team for your presentation and ask Ryan if anyone else has signed up to speak on this matter.
There are no other speakers signed up for this item.
So this public hearing is closed.
For Brooklyn, calendars numbers twenty-eight, twenty-nine, and thirty. CD four, calendar number twenty-eight, C two zero zero three four four, Z M K. Calendar number twenty-nine, N two zero zero three four three, Z R K. Calendar number thirty, C two zero zero three two six, Z S K. A public hearing in a matter of applications for zoning methods and zoning text amendments and special permit concerning Sudan Street rezoning.
There will be a ten-minute team presentation by a team comprised of Annie Terschwell, Richard Lobel, Fay M. Baton, Getz Obstfeld, Max Melzer, John Coogan, and I assume that this is a duplicate unless there is a second John Coogan. Please go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. Commissioners, good morning, Richard Lobel of Sheldon Lobel P.C. We have a team presentation. As the chair mentioned, I will be presenting with regards to the proposed zoning actions. Getz will then discuss the current and proposed, uh, building program. And Annie will then discuss community outreach and, and goals of the rezoning action. So you see before you the Sudan Street rezoning. Next slide. So this rezoning, uh, contemplates several actions, two text amendments, and several rezoning actions. You can see, uh, from the slide, and actually if you can advance one to the tax map, that you've got an existing R six district to the south and an M one district to the north. Uh, and so the proposed rezoning action would create a new mixed-use district, MX twenty-one, uh, which would occupy the western portion of the site. This would be a mixed-use M one five, R seventy district. On the eastern portion of the site, where there is an existing manufacturing building, uh, this would now be rezoned from an M one one to an M one five in order to, uh, allow for existing non-compliant bulk to become complying, as well as to allow for modest enlargement to this existing building and to, uh, to solidify certain manufacturing and maker uses within the building. There is also a small rezoning portion on the southern portion of the site. That, uh, the, the southern portion of the block is occupied by a four-story school, uh, and this rezoning would merely restore an R six zoning district to an additional twenty-five-foot portion, linear portion of the, of the site to allow for, uh, the entirety of the school property to be, to be conforming. Next slide. So here you can see pictures of, uh, the site and the surrounding area. Notably, facing the site in, and lot, uh, in slide one, you can see that we have a, a series of adjacent lots which are used for open parking, uh, and immediately to the rear of that is the existing manufacturing building, a two- and four-story building. Next slide. So within the surrounding area, uh, you can see both low-lying residential buildings, uh, including three- and four-story residential buildings and manufacturing buildings, uh, to the north and to the northeast of the site. The rezoning here would allow for, um, the proposed buildings to be in the context of the surrounding area. So, uh, we've got the existing school to the south of, south of the site, which is a community facility use, not permitted in an M one one, but is existing at roughly ninety-four feet in height. So the proposal would allow for a nine-story residential building on the Willoughby side of the site, which would itself be, uh, roughly equivalent at ninety-five feet to the school building and would also reflect the residential context close to the south and southeast. Next slide. And I would ask that you just page through to the land use map. So the land use map again reflects the existing uses around the site, obviously a dense residential area with the non-contextual R six, uh, as well as, uh, manufacturing and commercial uses to the north and northwest, uh, as well as limited uses to the northeast. So this would actually allow for a relatively nice transition and would further the goals of the area in for, uh, mixed-use development with affordable housing and job growth. So the next slide is the zoning change map. Uh, the zoning change map reflects, as discussed, the establishment of the new MX districts on the western portion of the site, the M one five on the eastern portion of the site, and then the extension of the R six on the southern portion of the site. Next slide. These are renderings which demonstrate both the residential building, the new residential building, which would occupy the open lots on the western portion of the site, as well as the, in the blue, the enlargement to the existing manufacturing building, itself a, uh, non-compliant building. The additional enlargement would be roughly fourteen thousand square feet. So I think with that, if you want to forward to slide eleven, uh, which would be after the renderings, Getz will discuss the existing and proposed building program.
Um, good, good morning, everyone. Uh, my name is Getz Obstfeld. I'm, uh, one of the owners, uh, along with Matt Linuzzi of this site. We purchased the building about twenty years ago, uh, and it was vacant and, uh, pretty much unused for a long time. It originally been built as a spaghetti factory a long time ago, and then it was, most recently had been used, uh, for some kind of a beverage, uh, distribution facility. We repurposed the building or re, re, uh, reorganized the building, uh, to create individual loft spaces, uh, for industrial users, uh, that, uh, existed in, uh, Bushwick at that time, uh, to create more or less, uh, five thousand, twenty-five hundred to five thousand square foot spaces, which seemed to be the, the right size for, um, individual, um, garment and furniture makers. And, uh, um, so we've been operating the building as an industrial building, uh, for these past twenty years. And, uh, it's been a, a good site for us. And, uh, about six years ago, uh, we started contemplating, uh, expanding the space, uh, as the, as the manufacturers were needing more space and, uh, and we were, uh, we started discussing the idea of, uh, creating both housing and, uh, workspaces, uh, combined and combining them, uh, in the same way that the neighborhood is very much an industrial and residential, uh, area all combined mixed up. And, uh, so, uh, we, uh, looked at, uh, creating both, um, additional residential space and additional, uh, industrial space in this, uh, in this facility. The, uh, go to the next slide, please. Right now in the building, uh, it's, uh, uh, we originally had a lot of, uh, garment users, but that industry has moved out of the city, uh, abroad, and, uh, in, in their place, it's been mostly, uh, uh, furniture, carpentry, and other sorts of, uh, custom, uh, handwork and artisan work, uh, for, uh, industries like the movie industry, uh, where people create sets, uh, woodworking, cabinet working for, um, uh, uh, high-end clients. That's the main type of, uh, existing manufacturing tenants we have in the building. Um, next slide. So, uh, the industrial portion of this project is to, uh, expand on the existing building, uh, with an additional approximately four thousand square feet, adding three floors, uh, to the building and, uh, with the idea that similar kinds of tenants that we have now, uh, would occupy that new space. At the same time, uh, it's been about twenty years since we renovated the building for the, uh, for the current users. And, uh, it's, we really need to, uh, upgrade, uh, elevators, roofs, uh, facade, uh, in the building. And so we're combining the addition of new space with the refurbishing of the existing space, uh, existing systems, uh, in the building. And, uh, the, uh, the reason why this can work for us really is because, uh, we have an existing building with existing services and existing elevators, so we can build new without having to incur the cost of, uh, all new systems, uh, that you would in a new construction, standalone new construction. Next slide. On the resident, uh, and this just, uh, uh, showing the, where the, it, where the new addition, uh, to the existing building would be located. We haven't yet said on exactly what the, uh, facade materials would look like. This is just showing the, the new portion, uh, how it would fit into the existing building. Uh, next slide. The, uh, the residential portion, uh, behind the, uh, the industrial building is on a vacant lot, so it would be an entirely new construction building, uh, with the height designed to, uh, conform or be slightly lower than the school next door, which occupies the full block front on Irving Place, Irving Street. We're proposing a ninety-five units. Um, what, by the way, let's move to the next slide. We're proposing ninety-five units, um, uh, under the M squared program of H D C, which provides for, uh, a minimum of twenty-five percent of the units under, uh, sixty percent of AMI and the balance of the units, um,
I'm afraid, I'm afraid that time has been called. And I would also remind, uh, Mr. Lobel yet again, that the courtesy of a team presentation is afforded only when there are at least three speakers, and so I would ask that you manage the time better. Otherwise, we will have to revert to three-minute presentations each. I open it up to the commissions. Commissioner Dweck.
Uh, thank you. So, Richard, maybe you could speak to some of the borough president's recommendations, about memorializing certain commitments. I'm sure you have the, uh, list of recommendations in front of you. So if you could speak to them, I would appreciate it, and, and finishing off on the affordable housing, if there was anything that was, um, remaining that needed to be heard, so please.
Sure. So, um, the borough president's recommendations, uh, and, and I think I'm going to defer to Annie for the second portion of the discussion. You know, themselves reflect, uh, lengthy conversations at both the borough president's office as well as the, uh, as well as at the, uh, community board. And so, um, the recommendations fall within one of several categories. One is with regards to the maker space and, um, you know, a kind of commitments with regards to maintaining that maker space. And the second with regards to the affordability and the affordability levels. Kind of begin by saying that the applicant here has, um, owned the building for over twenty years, uh, and that the maker space, which is currently in the building, one of the goals of the rezoning is to allow, um, the maker space to remain and to expand. So I know that there are a number of recording requirements and reporting that was requested by the borough president. Uh, I don't know exactly how we would effectuate that. I know that the borough president recommended using the measures that are included within the, um, industrial business incentive areas, special permit. And so that really has not been settled by the applicant. I think this is still a matter of discussion. Um, and I also know that, um, of course, the council member has been an integral part of discussions in this regard as well, uh, and particularly with regards to the affordability piece. Without it, uh, let Annie discuss the affordability and, and some of the commitments that have been made in that regard.
Hi, uh, this is Annie Terschwell from Type A Projects, and apologies, I was meant to be a speaker, but, um, clearly we're very enthusiastic about the project, so sorry that we didn't keep to the timeframe. It is true that, uh, a telling hallmark of this project to date has been our engagement with the community that's with the council member and his staff, as well as the community board alike. And so, as Getz had mentioned, we've been talking to them around issues of, of affordability and working spaces since twenty fifteen, obviously long before ULP was imminent. And so, you know, what emerged as, you know, sitting around the council member's conference table turned into a steering committee, and even DCP site visits to visit the manufacturing tenants. And so, um, we have been back and back again to the community board and have been responding to their goals around levels of affordability at the project and are working with them still to deepen those levels of affordability. And we think that we've got a, a plan that both, um, meets M I H and, uh, goes further to meet, uh, their broader requests. And, um, I, I, I do know that part of what has gotten us to have, um, support, to garner support from the community board and the council member has been a very iterative dialogue, um, all surrounding, um, our mutual goal to preserve and expand upon a job-producing manufacturing building while supporting working-class New Yorkers with affordable housing. And so we have worked really over the last six years to, um, meet, uh, community requirements around, um, around affordability, as well as keeping a manufacturing building manufacturing.
Commissioner Bernie.
Hi, thank you. The architects are not on the team today?
We have the architect present, should you want to ask questions.
Okay, good. Well, you know, I hate to sound like a broken record on this, but I would, OCV are a very competent architecture firm. I've known them for a long time. I would like them to resist the temptation to sort of use random colors on the facade on the main building. And secondly, you know, on the upgrading, the addition and the upgrading of the existing building, I think we could do a lot better. It seems that the, you know, the fenestration on the existing building is really minimal, and there's kind of now a jarring juxtaposition of the addition with the former. And I think the architects could perhaps spend a bit of time taking a look at that again.
Yeah, we appreciate that. This has been a long haul, and so we look to the next step, including taking considerations such as that into the design. So thank you for that. That's appreciated.
No other questions? I will thank the applicant team. And Ryan, has anyone else signed up to speak on this?
There are no.
Trying to make a comment.
Yeah. Is there a hand up? I just see raised hand.
I see Commissioner Bernie's raised hand. I think.
So that's, okay, right. That's it then.
Okay, no raised applause. With that, the public hearing is closed.
Thank you.
Brooklyn, calendar number 31, CD2 N 210061 CRK. A public hearing in the matter of an application for zoning text amendment concerning 86 Fleet Place.
Our first speaker will be Rachel, Rachel Skoll.
Good morning. Can you hear me?
Yes, please go ahead.
Thank you. My name is Rachel Skoll, and I'm an associate at Greenberg Charic. We represent Red Apple 86 Fleet Place Development LLC in this application to amend the special downtown Brooklyn District's retail continuity requirements. Ralph Zarinski is on the call as well on behalf of Red Apple. Next slide, please. Red Apple owns 86 Fleet Place at the southwest corner of Myrtle Avenue and Fleet Place in a C64 zoning district in the special downtown Brooklyn District. Next slide, please. The site's outlined there in red. Next slide, please. The property is improved with a 32-story building completed in 2017. The building's ground floor within 50 feet of Myrtle Avenue is subject to the special district's retail continuity restrictions, which requires such space be used for limited generally commercial uses. Next slide, please. The building's ground floor contains approximately 10,000 square feet of space that has been reserved for retail use. The applicant has been marketing this space for use by up to four commercial tenants since 2016. Despite these efforts, the space remains empty. Within the past year or so, dating back to before the pandemic began, the applicant has been approached by daycare and medical tenants interested in the space, leading us to this application, which would amend the zoning resolution to allow all non-residential uses permitted by the site's underlying C64 zoning district on the building's ground floor. Next slide, please. In 2018, the commission approved a similar application to allow non-residential uses on the ground floors of three Red Apple buildings on the block east of 86 Fleet Place that you see with the non-residential designation there. That application resulted in three community facility tenants leasing space in those buildings, a daycare and dialysis center each run by local not-for-profits and an urgent care clinic. Because I know it came up yesterday during review session, I want to clarify that the CVS on the corner of Myrtle and Ashland predated that application and has been there since 2010. Like the buildings to the east, 86 Fleet Place has no frontage on Flatbush Avenue extension and is located across Myrtle Avenue from Ingersoll Houses, lending the area more residential character than locations at the center of downtown Brooklyn. These characteristics make the property more suitable for a tenant such as a community facility tenant that would benefit local residents. Next slide, please. This is the proposed amendment to the map in Appendix E that would extend that non-residential requirement line there. Next slide, please. This is the amendment to the text itself in 101-11. The community board and borough president both recommended approval of this application, and I thank you for your time and happy to take any questions.
Thank you. Questions from the commission. Commissioner Dweck.
Just, thank you. Just wondering if you've been in touch with the local tenant leaders of the NYTA projects around about community facility spaces?
I don't believe we've made that outreach up, but we're aware of the borough president's recommendation, and the applicant is committed to having those conversations as well as reaching out to local arts organizations. And Ralph Zarinski from Red Apple will be on next, and I can let him elaborate.
Thank you very much.
Commissioner, please.
I both a comment and a question. I think it's important for us to, you know, realize that, you know, oftentimes we have an overreach in the zoning that desires and requests activities in places where, you know, they cannot be supported. And I think, you know, the limitations on the ground floor here are a good example of that. It's too bad you have to come back to us to request this expansion. It's an expensive process. I mean, we certainly don't want, you know, every property owner to have to go through this. That said, as you think about a different set of uses, you know, are there principles or guidelines? And we have guidelines through the city for what levels of transparency we look to see so that, you know, even though we're not seeing active ground floor space, that what happens at the ground floor retains sort of a, you know, nice pedestrian environment for folks as they walk by. Have any considerations been given to what will happen at the ground floor with these new, different kinds of uses?
Sure. So every tenant's a little bit different, especially when it comes to community facilities. Some require more privacy than others. Ralph, who's going to be up next, can speak a little bit more to the experience he's had in filling the spaces in the other three buildings from the 2018 application. But we are excited that this would give the potential to have a tenant in the space, which would obviously activate the street frontage a lot more than what we've seen over the past three or almost four years that the building's been there.
Other questions? Thank you, Ms. Skoll.
Thank you.
And as you've previewed, our next speaker will be Ralph Zarinski.
Hi, this is Ralph. Can you hear me?
Yes, please go ahead.
I thank you, commissioners, for the time. As Rachel mentioned, you know, we completed this building in 2017 and, you know, attempted to, or really began our leasing efforts in 2016 or even 2015, you know, as we were in design of the property. You know, we've actively marketed through really all reasonable channels, through multiple brokers, through events, through online listings, through community outreach, through working with the neighborhood bid. And as the commissioner mentioned, it was that, you know, that Myrtle Avenue, or at least the stretch of Myrtle Avenue, the pedestrian foot traffic really is not there to support a variety of retail uses. And where we did see need and where we, you know, did see success in leasing was through community facility users, which is why, you know, we look to, similar to what we did in 2018, extend the community facility or the ability for community facility users to this building as well, as we've had success attracting community facility users as a result of the 2018 application. You know, happy to answer any further questions from the commissioners.
Thank you. Questions? Vice Chair Knuckles.
Well, I guess I'd ask, why didn't you include this parcel in the 2018 application?
Rachel may be able to speak to that clearer, but I believe that this was in a different zoning district than the other three properties in the 2018 application. At the time, just for purposes of expediency, we opted not to include it in that application. Also, at the time, we didn't know if convert, you know, having community facility uses allowed would be, you know, material, you know, create material demand from community facility users. You know, that trial proved, you know, successful, so that's why we're seeking it now.
Other questions? Again, thank you for your testimony, Mr. Zarinski.
Thank you, Chairwoman.
And Ryan, any other speakers on this item?
There are no other speakers signed up for this item.
Okay, so this public hearing is closed?
Our last item today, Borough of Manhattan, calendar number 32, CD2 N 140439 ZRM. A public hearing in the matter of an application for zoning text amendment concerning 23 to 25 Cleveland Place.
For this matter, we will have our first presentation by the applicant's representative, and then we will follow our standard practice of going to five speakers in opposition and then speakers in support. And our first speaker is Richard Lobell.
Good morning, Chair Commissioners. Next slide, please. So we have before you the 2325 Cleveland Place zoning text amendment. This is a very small application. And you can see from the circled area in red, the area in question. So 23 Cleveland Place, which is Lot 11, is located within the special Little Italy district and partially within District Area A and partially within Area C. So because the frontage of 23 Cleveland Place, which is on the southern portion of the development site, is located with the majority of its frontage in Area C, it gets to use Area C treatment for the entirety of its lot. So we're dealing with two small lots here. And Area C, as you can see on the map, encompasses the southern portion of this frontage on Cleveland Place. So what we have is we have all of the buildings to the south of the site, our received Area C frontage, which allows them to build to a height of 85 feet. And our lot, Lot 11, 23 Cleveland Place, similarly is allowed to build to a height of 85 feet. Lot 13, which is 25 Cleveland Place, is located within Area A. And so the proposed zoning text amendment merely moves that district line, the sub-district line, 25 feet, to allow for a majority of the frontage of Lot 13 to also be located within Area C. This would allow for uniform treatment within Area C and allow for one contiguous 85-foot building and prevent the applicant from having to build two buildings, one at 85 feet with additionally 100% lot coverage, and one with a maximum height of 75 feet with only 60% lot coverage. Next slide. So I think if you could just forward through, we would actually go to, beyond the pictures, I think we would go to the existing site plan, which demonstrates exactly the areas of question. One more slide. Thank you. So this is it. You can see where the Area C and Area A line is divided. And you can see a majority of the frontage of Lot 11 is within Area C. And so this would essentially shift that line 25 feet and would allow for uniform treatment. In addition to the obvious benefits of being able to build one contiguous building, we note that the existing building on the corner, Lot 15, is located within Area A but is built to an existing non-complying height of 13 stories or 136 feet. So really, all of the buildings on this frontage, other than Lot 13, are able to receive Area C treatment. Doing this would allow for productive development on a site where now there are two substandard buildings in disrepair, and we're happy to answer any questions.
Questions for Mr. Lobell. Commissioner Levin.
I'd like to ask about, I mean, I think the issue here is the potential for expanded uses as a result of this change. I think in particular, the large format retail is problematic. And the community board, however, really focused on quality of life issues associated with eating and drinking establishments. And there's a passage in the community board's letter, paragraph 13, that said that the land use attorney stated that the applicant had zero intention of putting in an eating and drinking establishment on the ground floor, but then it turned out that an SLA permit application was pending at the same time. Could you address that discrepancy, please?
Sure. So the discussion was basically to allow Use Group 6 in one contiguous floor plate, as opposed to breaking up the floor plate in Building 2 building. So I think I would just address the Use Group 10 discussion first. The applicant understands, having been to the community board myself so many times with regards to ground floor commercial uses and particularly large retail, Use Group 10 became a real issue, and the community board and I went through the proposed use groups, and Use Group 10 was really the problematic use. Despite the fact that if you take a look at the retail landscape right now, not many people are opening up department stores in Soho, the applicant, after discussion with the council member, has agreed to enter into a restrictive declaration so that this use can be taken off the table and that Use Group 10 would not be an option for the applicant on a going-forward basis. So while, of course, we don't feel that this is part of the land use discussion of the commission, the applicant has voluntarily agreed to that as a nod to the community board and their concern about uses. With regards to that discrepancy, there was a, you know, there was a misunderstanding with regards to the nature of the commercial use on the ground floor. The applicant did want to retain the option to do Use Group 6 but not Use Group 10. There was that application going forward. The conversation actually was a misunderstanding with regards to the SLA application. The discussion was whether or not that ground floor restaurateur, whether or not he knew about this application, the potential for a, the fact that a new building would be built here. And the understanding was that he did understand that. And subsequent conversations with the community board, that was made aware to them. So, again, not interested in Use Group 10. We don't think it's a viable use. But again, happy to so limit the property to remove that from the conversation.
Okay, but the other way to limit it is not approve this application and leave the zoning as is. You can still do two ground floor eating and drinking establishments, just not a big one.
So the existing zoning districts here would remain unchanged as C61 and a C62. Given the extremely limited floor plate here, these are small lots with roughly 20 feet of frontage each. You know, it's more meaningful for the applicant to be able to have those two combined into one lot. I don't think that, given the state of retail in this area, and particularly when looking at vacant sites, vacant storefronts, and the commission's own statements with regards to retail use and the challenges facing retail use, that would be advantageous to force the applicant to have two 20-by-100 sites and commercially, be able to combine those and potentially have a more, you know, a more contiguous floor plate for commercial use. This is not, you know, this is not an M15B district where there's discussion around ground floor commercial use being legal. The commercial use would be legal here on both sites regardless of whether this application was approved. And so it would just be a matter of whether or not it was in one site or two sites.
Yeah, we're talking about how big. Right, understood. Thank you.
There are questions from the commission. Thank you, Mr. Lobell.
Thank you.
Our next speaker will be Marna Lawrence.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, welcome.
My name is Marna Lawrence. I live at 19 Cleveland Place. I'm strongly opposed to the application as proposed. Yesterday's review session pertaining to the application ended with a synopsis of Manhattan Borough President's letter, where she urged the applicant to engage community members in productive conversation about the current onsite issues. The applicants have, to the best of my knowledge, never reached out to the community to discuss their plans. At least they haven't so far, so possibly the DCP can help residents understand how to make this happen. They did meet with the community at two community board land use meetings to present their proposal to amend the slid zoning to build to the rear lot line, essentially taking over the entire open space courtyard that presently exists surrounded by 22 residential buildings containing approximately 175 residential units. The second meeting with the community board, the committee commanded them on their newly designed facade and then asked them to make some changes, or would they be willing to make specific changes? They refused to even discuss any of these suggestions. Of course, we hear today that they're willing to remove Use Group 10, but that still leaves us with a question of what they intend to use it for. It was even more concerning at yesterday's review session, therefore, to hear that design may change based on the market conditions. And it appears the applicant got the message renting office spaces at this time are not marketable. You know, the other applications, I listened to the review session, always made it clear what it was they intended to use the space, the buildings for. The fact that they're being vague is, kind of makes us fearful that they want something other than what they initially purported to want. And our biggest fear, of course, is eating and drinking establishment, a hotel or a club. In the 15 residential buildings surrounding Petrosino Park, there are eight active liquor licenses, more than half the number of buildings. We do not yet need another one. I think that I can speak for many that the, in the area, that we're less concerned about the height. I think that I can speak for many that the, in the area, that we're less concerned about the height of the building than we are the intended use. The Special Little Italy neighborhood is residential, as Nancy Pelosi would say, residential, residential, residential. The proposed oversight commercial development on Cleveland Place would be out of character for this block and the entire Little Italy neighborhood. The district is a major, majority residential community with four-to-six-story walk-up residential buildings, a smaller retail on the ground floor. All recent real estate developments in the neighborhood have been residential with some hotels. One example is the newly-built luxury residential condo building at seventy-five Kenmare Street. A few years ago, and let me just say, I see that my time is severely limited from two minutes, I thought. But I would like to make sure that the, that the DCP understand the environmental impacts that this would have on the residents in terms of how many HVAC mechanicals would be required and the additional noise. And also, as I've sent you
I'm afraid that your time is up, but we would welcome you submitting written testimony. And at this point, I'll turn it over to commissioners for questioning. Thank you for testifying. Our next speaker will be Lona Tenenbaum. Laura Tenenbaum, I apologize.
Hi, just one second. I got into a, a technical problem here. I, I want to urge denial of the application and speak in support of the recommendations of Community Board Two and the Borough President. In two thousand and four, city planning wrote in its decision allowing residential uses at one ninety-nine Lafayette Street that the surrounding area is primarily characterized by residential uses. The trend in the area since then has been consistently toward residential uses, even within the Kenmare Street corridor, which is what the applicant seeks to extend. The truth of the matter is that the square block is entirely residential with ground floor retail, with the exception of an extremely small building on Spring Street. The real issue is use, and I'm going to address Use Group Ten even despite what Mr. Lobel just said, because we had not heard that before. The app, as Warner indicated, the applicant said in yesterday's review session that the design, it presented as subject to market conditions. That would include use. There is no guarantee there will ever be an office building at the site. Of the additional as-of-right uses available once a proposed text change is affected, the most worrisome is Use Group Ten. Applicant could build a, a a big box store, but it also could build a hotel housing Use Group Ten eating or drinking establishment with no restrictions and operating as a club. And should there be a, any agreement, I would think that that would have to also be eliminated. Even with a commercial building, applicant could construct an outdoor eating or drinking use on the roof of the rear yard extension and of the roof of the building. Even the State Liquor Authority has a pine that Petrosina Square has become so glutted with restaurants that serious quality of life issues arise. A year ago, there were highly-publicized drawings of a plan for a butterfly sanctuary at the site and occurred to many of us that this would be a wonderful theme for a club, not so much for an office building. When the applicants first bought the two buildings, the restaurateurs leasing the ground floor of twenty-five Cleveland told us the owners were planning to build a hotel. What's to say that still isn't the plan? I want to note that two of the three buildings that the applicant owns in the slid have active partial stop-work orders, that all three have racked up a total of more than thirty-five ECP construction violations, thirteen of which have been Class One severity. The primary beneficiaries of the denial would be the neighbors. A combined lot would be controlled by the zoning of the preservation area. While the new construction could still be an office building or a hotel, it could not be a big box store or a hotel with a Use Group Ten club. Fewer residential neighbors would lose their lot line windows because the building would be ten feet shorter. According to the CEQR, the square footage would go down ten thousand square feet. That would, there would still be an open rear yard, and the applicant would have to comply with the preservation area rules respecting landscaping. That was it. That was it. I was, I was just gonna repeat what I said that I urged denial, but that's fine. Thank you.
Thank you for making such good use of your time and for your testimony.
I worked at it.
It shows. Thank you. Um, questions from the commission? Again, thank you for your testimony. And our next speaker will be Sante Scardillo.
Hi, can you hear me now?
Yes, welcome.
Oh, good. Good morning to you. And thank you for the opportunity to comment, of course, against this lopsided application. I would like to start with Mr. Lobel's presentation and his spacious argument. If the buildings are in disrepair, and quote "substandards," it's because the landlord and developer has allowed them to be so. The district lines and the outer scale building to the north of the site exist because the special zoning district is pre-existed by them. So the buildings were already built when the Little Italy Special Zoning District was originated. The fear of the community is, of course, for not a department store, but a palace-scale nightclub. And this should be clear from Marna's eloquent presentation, and I want to commend Laura for hers, too. This morning has been a very informational session for me, because not just for this, a massive investment of my time, but I learned about the respected Acme Smoking Fish Factory and the pot of gold that the developers see there, five hundred and twenty-five million dollars in investment. I thought they were talking about fifth and fifty-seven. But, you know, aside from these unchallenged planes, and I would like to urge the commission to look at this present application very, very carefully. While the city needs investment, the zoning is in place to preserve the historical and cultural identity of our great city. The social texture of the city is being ripped apart. People dispossessed of their neighborhoods and neighborhoods of their identity. The neighborhoods' identities are being lost and is not good for the city and ultimately for economic development. The Robert Moses idea of development has been defeated and superseded by the SOHO model, which has had repercussions on conservation on planetary scale and springing develop, sorry, preservation rise and originating economic development worldwide. The zoning, the present zoning, the Little Italy Special District zoning, was born of the low-max-defeated plan by Robert Moses and is under siege daily. We urge you to preserve the neighborhood and not let it die of the thousand-cuts death, because every day there is a new application. All we have to try to keep the identity of this place. And, you know, it's still, even if people are saying, I am the living testimony that there are still people born in Italy or living
I'm afraid that your time, that your time is up. We would welcome the submission of any written testimony. And I look to see if there are questions from the commission. And thank you for your time and also for your testimony. Our next speaker is Peter Davies.
Okay, thank you. It took a while for me to loop back in. My name is Peter Davies. I'm a local resident of the area, and I speak in opposition to this application as proposed. Commercial development does not meet the needs of the area and runs counter to the general purposes of the Special Little Italy District. Looking at the applicant's ultimate goal for the joining of the two adjacent properties to create one large development site where the application states merge the two tax lots that comprise the proposed development site into a single zoning tax lot. The merged tax lots for twenty-three and twenty-five Cleveland Place, shown in the applicant's presentation, would have a combined frontage on Cleveland Place of fifty-one feet with only eighteen feet, only thirty-six percent within Area C. Thereby, the majority of the frontage of the proposed development site, sixty-four percent, is within Area A, and the regulations for Area A would be, would govern the larger single merge tax lot where per ZR one oh nine dash oh four, which states that the zoning lot shall be subject to the regulations of the area in which the greater portion of its frontage lies. It is only through the piecemeal and roundabout route of first getting a text change and then afterwards merging the two lots that the applicant can pursue this current course. I urge the commissioners to look at the applicant's end game. If granted this proposal as presented, it would result in the loss of numerous residential units. HPD records indicate as many as three units in twenty-three Cleveland and six units in twenty-five Cleveland. That loss of housing runs counter to the current needs of the area and the general stated goals of the Special Little Italy District noted in ZR one oh nine dash zero zero, which includes this specific goal, D, to permit the rehabilitation and new development consistent with the residential character and scale of existing buildings in the area. Further, the proposed development seeking allowance for enlargement on the site and inclusion of nearly ten thousand square feet of occupiable retail space on the ground floor and cellar set down in ZR one oh nine five one four, which states "Any enlargement will not increase the density of population or intensity of use to the detriment of the occupants of the buildings in the block and nearby blocks." Had the applicant pursued its two thousand and eight application at DOB for the construction of additional housing, we would be having a different conversation today. But since that is not the case, I urge the commissioners to look to the residential character of the area to protect the unbuilt open space within this block and the quality of life for those who live here. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Davies. Questions from the commission? Thank you for testifying. Our next speaker will be James McDonald. Should we move on to our next speaker and return to the
Yeah, we can try and get, get men on another way. Okay.
Our next speaker will be Amanda Ianotti.
Hi, good afternoon, Chair and Commissioners. Amanda Ianotti from Sheldon Lobel PC. I'd like to respond to a couple of the points raised by the opposition. You know, the first speaker said that they're not concerned about height here. They're concerned about use. And we'd like to point out that Use Group Six, commercial use and hotel are as-of-right uses. And this, this application for the applicant, it is not about use. It is about producing a productive building, an eight-story building that is consistent with the character of the block. And regarding use, a lot of the concern was about Use Group Ten, a large-scale retail establishment. The applicant is willing to limit that such use of the property with a restrictive declaration. They don't intend to build that. And to alleviate that concern, they will execute and record a restricted declaration saying that the property will not be used as a Use Group Ten, a large-scale retail establishment. There's also been many concerns about the loss of residential use. And the applicant, while in this application, has shown a Use Group Six commercial establishment on the ground floor and offices above, is not ruling out the possibility of having residential use above the ground floor either. In addition, I wanted to point out that the applicant has made other concessions in light of comments heard at the community board about facade treatment. They came back and redesigned the facade to show brick to be consistent with the character of the area. There is also concern about the loss of the rear yard and the quality of life issues with the loss of the rear yard and the one hundred percent lot coverage because there is an existing tree that many of the residents find valuable, and they're working with a landscape architect to preserve that tree, to either build around that tree or remove it and replant it back on top of the roof of the, the first floor. So there is a willingness to work with the community to create a productive building that fits within the character of the area and does not cause any quality of life issues to the residents, specifically with limiting that large-scale retail establishment and producing a building with materials that are consistent with the character of the area and preserve the tree in the rear yard. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions for Ms. Ianotti? Thank you for testifying, and our next speaker will be Joyce Reese.
Ms. Reese, you should be able to unmute your microphone. Oh, there we go. You've got your camera on.
Okay. Thank you, everyone, for your time this afternoon. I just wanted to give you a little bit of background on us. We have been in business for over thirty years. We're heavily invested in the downtown area and very committed to the community. We feel that this is there, the opposition is unfounded, to be honest. We are simply, this is a simple request, an increase of four thousand, you know, square feet, which just allows us to build a uniform property. Most importantly, the two owners that are directly affected, the property owners, by this is in the rear and side who have given their support fully. And as to the accusation of, of use, and for us, where we're insinuating, that have been insinuated that we want to build a nightclub, I would be happy to volunteer to give you that commitment that we have no intention of building a nightclub here. We have numerous buildings downtown in the Soho, primarily in Soho, Nolita. You know, the, the point of, of, of bringing up on establishments of liquor, I don't even comprehend that because there are so many all-over establishments in that area that are trying to survive. Any, any retail is now, at this point, trying to survive and make things work. And Amanda pointed out that we would also be open to building residential. You know, this is really very simple. One is allowed as-of-right, eight floors, and the next-door building is allowed only one floor less, seven floors. And we just want to have a viable, if we're gonna go and, and put in, you know, and develop, and, and, and this should be welcome throughout the city. The, the city is, has been desecrated now. Any development, especially this, which is such a reasonable request of four thousand square feet, should be welcome. If there are any concerns, we've addressed all of the concerns of the community. I don't know another developer who, who has
Ms. Reese, I'm afraid that your time is up.
Yes, I, I appreciate, again, everyone's time. I needed you to hear our perspective from
Again, at this point, it's time for any questions. Again, thank you for, oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Levin.
Well, yes, Ms. Reese, I would like to follow up on your what your ultimate plans are here. You just indicated that, well, maybe you would be building residential. Maybe you're building commercial. It's pretty unusual for someone to get this far in a rezoning effort without a clear picture of exactly what it is you're planning to build. I don't think the shape of the building is the concern here. What is the concern is what you're gonna put in that building, and you must have a business plan.
Yes, the business plan was to build it, you know, commercial. If that is, we never addressed the fact that because if your concern is commercial, then we would be open to residential.
If you're planning to, if your, your, your desire here is for a commercial building, what kind of commercial tenants do you anticipate, or would you like to have on the upper floor?
Office, professional.
Professional office.
Yes, professional office, and, and the bottom is retail.
Is it retail or is it a bar, restaurant?
No, it's right now with the way the economy has changed. I don't know that I don't know that anyone's coming in. Look how many empty retail. I, I don't know how this question is now viable. It is allowed as of right for me, for us to have any tenant in their retail or restaurant.
I fully understand that, but it's really not helpful when you refer to the local community as the opposition.
Yes, it, I feel they are completely opposed. And, and it is like, um, someone brought up one thing and then it became a fire and it is not true. I, it is baseless. We have, I can bring you, we have thirty letters of support. Thirty letters of support. The main ones are, as I brought up, uh, that were fully in support of this is the property owners to the rear and to the side.
Ms. Reese, permit yourself to answering the commissioner's questions at this point.
Sure, sure. I apologize.
And obviously feel free to submit the letters of support.
Yes.
Other questions? Thank you for your testimony, and our next speaker will be Jack Jangana.
He is no longer here.
Okay. Then, um, Andrew Chris.
Hello.
Welcome.
Hey, can you hear me? And I guess my.
Please.
I didn't see me. Um, hey, how's it going? I've been on two of the other meetings. I live in twenty-three Cleveland Place. I've lived there for five years. I grew up in the area. My father, um, was born in Nolita. He's been in the area his entire life. I am a partner in a number of real estate ventures and restaurants and other investment things in the area. I can't overly stress the level of outreach the developer and landlord has done for people in our building, the people in neighboring buildings. And just for the community overall. The owner also owns a building on Modic Room Street, which for years has housed some of the area's top artists, which they were given free spaces, including me, who, you know, I find myself as a filmmaker and artist during some of my, uh, time. Um, and I, this, this want to really attest towards this tax amendment, this being involved in a few different angles. I have helped with outreach and helped get other, some people's support on it. You know, a lot of you are anti-this and it's usually the same people that are anti-everything. There's a tremendous amount of support in the neighborhood and that support goes to, you know, I really think comes from what the landlord has and the people involved done in the past. And they know that anything that's going to go in this building will be something that will create jobs for the area, make the area much nicer and continue that sense of community that really is the new Nolita and Soho today. And, you know, we're living in a time people are, I hear with hotels and this, we're currently going through a time in New York City where half the hotels are actually being converted to residential, like it's, I don't think anyone's building hotels with a smart business plan anyway. But a lot of time is getting wasted when we could have something really, really great, something that'd be balanced. You look at other buildings in this area and they all extend fifty feet across to have a lopsided building as uneven and crooked. It's like physically going back to another time. It doesn't attribute anything and we're taking something that could be really special that could give to the community, could give to the park in front. You go to the park in front now, it's homeless people sleeping in there. You know, I know the owner offered to put somewhere between seven figures to fight the homeless issue and improve the park, you know. I, I just don't understand why there's so much opposition when so much good would come from giving a few thousand square feet.
Thank you, Mr. Chris. Questions? Thank you for your testimony.
Thank you very much.
At this point, I'll note that we are getting near the end of folks who have signed up to speak on this matter. And so if you haven't registered to speak, but have decided during the course of this hearing that you'd like to, that would be the time to register. And you can find instructions on how to register, whether online or via telephone at www.nyc.gov slash NYCengage. Our next speaker will be Frederica Segal.
Ms. Segal, there you go.
Can you hear me? This, this, uh, this is a slow system, but you can hear me, please?
Yes, please go ahead.
Uh, I came here with notes written to underscore the points that CB two made in its reso. And at this point, I've torn up the paper and I'm a little bit tearing up my hair. Uh, we saw that, we heard this application over two months and during that time there was very little, um, movement on the part of the applicant. The two concessions that they made were the redesign, redesigned facade of brick and amassing plan with a setback on the eighth floor. That was if they, we approved their application. It wasn't clear that that was going to be a permanent, uh, change to their application. We talked a lot about residential, about the point of the slid being to enhance the residential character and there was no talk of them making a residential building. They came with letters of support and, uh, one of our committee members and one of the community, uh, residents started looking into the names and found that, um, most of them had some kind of business dealings with, um, with the applicant, maybe one or two or just, um, neutral residents in the neighborhood. Uh, I don't understand, Andrew Chris was one of the ones who spoke and he was the one who was, um, found to have some business dealings with, uh, the applicant. Andrew mentioned something about them making some contribution to Petrosino Square, but in the course of our conversations with the applicant, it turned out the applicant had never made any kind of, uh, contribution towards the, uh, the renovation of Petrosino Square. Uh, that with respect to the tree in the backyard, it's an old tree. It's a big tree. Only in New York would you find people who would be so committed to the tree. The applicant's approach was to actually enclose the tree in the building and have the built, um, and have the tree sprout out of the first floor of, of their addition. So in, just in short, if there is any opportunity to bring together the applicant, the community, to have a, a different kind of dialogue, community board too would be very happy to facilitate that. But, um, as Commissioner Levin pointed out, we can only do that if they come to us with a business plan. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Segal. Questions? Again, thank you. Our next speaker will be James Andrew.
Hi there, can you hear me?
Yes, please, go ahead.
Uh, I'd just like to thank the commission for the opportunity to speak. I'd also like to debunk the, well firstly, I also have prepared notes, but I think there's been some very eloquent speakers about the way that the developers trying to finagle, uh, journey of the evolution of this process in terms of combining lots and the fact that they are, that these two lots combined are vastly a minority in terms of what they're asking for is a telling fact. Uh, I think it's good timing for me to be on this call because I am indeed one of the residents that abuts the project at two oh five Mulberry Street across the entire east boundary of the project. I am absolutely in objection to this. I know they have cited one, um, one, one tenant, you know, owner in, in favor of that. That is the commercial owner of two zero one Mulberry Street, which is also part of our building. But the rest of the owners are absolutely in objection to this. One of, one of those tried to speak before Jamie, um, McDonald, who you weren't able to connect to. I know there was at least one other and I don't want to mention their by name unless they want to be identified, but there was at least one other member of our building on the, on this meeting, again, I know in objection. Um, I think the, the, the point here is that by limiting size, we don't have to trust the developer in terms of their use. There's no reason that this development needs to be larger for the furtherment of the, of the neighborhood. It merely is at the benefit of the developer. So if it's seven stories in one side and eight in the other, as they threatened, which I doubt, I think they're much more likely to make a uniform building rather than build, build out half of the, uh, half of the, um, rear yard and add an extra four to half the space. But even then, that would serve a community purpose because it would mean that the two non-contiguous roof levels were not as useful for, for, for commercial use. Use group six, I believe, and I'm no developer, allows for a restaurant on the roof. We don't want that. We don't want a restaurant or any other activity on the, on a built-out first floor roof of a combined development with allowing eighty percent, um, use of the lot. To suggest that you put that tree on the roof is, is ridiculous. We also don't want the, that, that rear yard elevated for any reason. We don't want to lose the tree. Um, it's not in character with the, um, with the, with the neighborhood. This is a residential neighborhood. And I, I personally, some other people may not have issue with the extra height, but I, I do have an issue with, with the additional, with the additional story at the rear of the building, given I look straight at it and that's the direction that the sunset comes from. So, um, I, I applaud the other very well researched, um, objections to this and refute what the owners are saying about the level of community support. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Andrew. Questions? Thank you for testifying.
Thank you.
Our next speaker will be Sarah McDonald. Ryan, is Ms. McDonald still in the meeting?
She was in the attendee column and I just want to see if she's on the, she made it into the panelist column. Looks like we may have lost her in promoting her, so we'll reach out to her.
Great. And we'll move on to Patricia Lansing.
Patricia is no longer in the room. Patricia's not here. Um, if we want to worried about losing Ms. McDonald.
What I would suggest is, um, we'll go back to people who were called, um, but were not present at the time, James McDonald.
Yeah, James is no longer in the room.
Okay. Jack Jangana?
No, Jack is not here.
Okay. And then again, Sarah McDonald.
Yes, Sarah is, so we're, we're reaching out to Sarah McDonald now.
Okay. Um, and if I could ask, while we, um, await that outreach, if any other folks had signed up to speak?
We have no other speakers registered on this item currently.
Okay, so we will wait a moment to see if Ms. McDonald is still available to testify.
Looks like we're not getting a response from Ms. McDonald.
Can they be asked to submit written testimony if they want?
We can do that. We can have them submit written testimony.
Any of the three people who have, um, who had signed up but were not able.
Sure.
And with that, having no other speakers, um, the public hearing on this matter is closed. And I would ask if there is any other business before the commission?
Chair Lago, just, uh, one housekeeping matter, if I may.
Please.
For those of you who were unable to or did not wish to testify, we can submit written testimony online by selecting this hearing on the upcoming meetings page of the NYC Engage portal through DCP's webpage or by mailing your comment to City Planning Commission Calendar Information Office, one twenty Broadway, thirty-first floor, New York, New York, one zero two seven one.
Thank you. And with that, this public meeting is closed. Goodbye to all commissioners.
Take care.
Take care.
Bye-bye.
Bye.